Living on Hamilton Road right now and they're building a house on Rico Road. So they'll be moving, I think for one district or another to do that. Yeah, but anyway. She, I'll send everybody your contact information if you want to talk during the weekend or whatever. Sharp Lady, she very interested in zoning. I've talked to her a couple of times about the zoning in the context of the house that they're building. And I think it'd be good to have a woman on the commission and a sharp lady like her, I think would be a good fit. So. That and then the other, the other four of the people that are already on there, Doug, Cloud, Patrick Johnson, Rodney Peak and Scott Lightsey. On the Historic Commission, Brian Gross, Kim Taylor, Cloud, Lyra Rhine, Amber Lightsey and Jean Griffith. Sarah Love has moved out of the community. She's asking to stay on. The commission members that I've talked to seem fine with that. Here's, here's my thought there. She has a lot of reach into because of her work into like DCA and a lot of the departments that do that kind of work. She wants to continue working your mom's houses here. At some point she will be moving back to Chedoo Hills permanently, but. Again, in that commission, the way that that commission was set up, it's like the Parks Commission, it actually does allow members that don't live in the city. And again, just the way that.
When was that changed?
If you read the thing about the Historic Commission. And the Parks Commission, they both say it that way. But again, I don't feel that strongly about it. I get the feeling she would help anyway.
Yeah, I feel a little strongly about it. I think commission members ought to live in the city.
Anybody else have thoughts on that? Okay. That's that thing. And then the next thing is especially event center permit. Mike, you want to talk to us about that?
Actually.
Yeah.
Awesome.
So our applicant, Justin Robinson, who's actually here today. Is wanting to open or build a special event center, large, that's not really going to be large, but. Off the Wilkerson Mill Road. He has about 28 acres. So he has the land to do it. He is here because in the RL District, it's a requirement to get a special use permit for an event center. So what else? I'm here for any questions in the afterwards as well.
All right. I know that several of the council members were in meetings about that with the applicant. Any, any thoughts of anybody else? Ruby, it's in your district. Again, happy to entertain. Any thoughts? We have the applicant here. Can we ask any questions?
Um, we met with the resident on Monday and they actually had a lot of question for Justin. One of the concerns they was speaking about that there was, you know, things going on down at the lake. And Justin kind of told him that he's not down there during that time. So. There is no, you know, since he had the property, there's no signs that saying private property. I guess people just from, from the past that's still been going down there. All times at night or something like that. So I don't know, you know, with that. So we did ask him to put some private property or something so people would stay off his property. The only concern I had, and I didn't even get a chance to address Jess, Justin with that, was that driveway, you know, is that the only way they can come in is from with us in their road?
If you look at the drawing, the drawing doesn't make it, the drawing that's in the paperwork here doesn't make it quite clear, but if you, if you. Look at the site plan, the, the one driveway that goes into the site is very close to one of the, there you go, that thing, the big thing, the full town. It's very close to the neighboring property line. But it's, that's what you're talking about, right, Ruby?
Yes, that's, that's it. Just concerned about how close that driveway, you know, with the property and people going back through there. What could you do if, you know, anything different, you know, from the traffic going through that driveway? That was the concern that I did have after I looked at everything and drove by.
Thanks, Ruby. Anybody else?
Um, yeah, I had. Um, one thing too is that in the meetings, the residents were concerned about the level of noise. And of course we have a noise ordinance. But out in the country, noise carries and they're very, back of their properties are very close. So on one question was one of the. I thought there were three, not buildings, but. Events, event spaces. And I thought I only saw two on the map. Was there a third one, Justin?
So, hey, everybody. My name is Justin. I'm a chef. Primary purpose of these structures is total of every structure is one is the commissary kitchen where I can do the order of my cooking.
You know what? Justin, come on up here so that they're recording and so that Ruby can hear you too.
Test, test. All right. How are you doing, everybody?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Like I was saying, my name is Justin Robinson. I'm a chef. I'm a private chef. I do a lot of catering gigs as well. And I just feel like it's time in my career to kind of spread my wings instead of cooking out of my house on four stove eyes. So. The primary purpose of one of the structures is a commissary kitchen. Commissary kitchen is where I'll hold my private dinners. And I'll be able to cook the stuff out from a commercial kitchen standpoint. And I have a picture as well to pass around. Um, just for reference and also the second room, yeah, the second room or structure is a wedding venue. And the wedding venue I am booked for weddings. And I figure why not? It's a beautiful space. It's right there by the pond. So I figured it would be a great structure to. Put up as well. And I'll do, I'll pass around the top view so you can kind of see the close proximity of these buildings. It's not like it's taken up. All 28 acres. If anything, it takes up maybe two acres of my 28 acres. And the third structure is just four white walls, similar to what we're in right now. I was not going to have a roof over in string light just to build that ambiance. And that's where people can have an outdoor dining reception. And those are my three structures for what I'm calling the experience estate.
So, so that was my question about the outdoor structure. Cause I heard the residence concern about noise and carrying out there. If there was any. Opportunity to reconsider that and either have that enclosed or have the music in one of your other venue things?
Yes, ma'am.
That's something you could have as a condition of zoning. If you want to have it enclosed, that's something that you can have as a condition of zoning.
Yeah. And to your, to your point as well, I don't think that's something that would be an issue. Majority of the music, if any, is going to be paid. Like we can go into a restaurant anytime, you know, the speakers that they may have in, it won't even be the big speakers that are constantly sitting here. Will be played, you know, to set the ambiance, loud music. Which we would consider loud would be played in the wedding venue, but just like any venue on the outside, you don't hear anything. It's not until you walk into the venue and that's the type of noise level that I plan to keep things at. I brought to the attention when I met with the other neighbors that if I was to have music that's played in that Santorini room, which is the outside walls. You know, I picture, you know, a saxophone or a violin, something like that, you know, if people decide to. Have music, but that's not, you know, your average thing. I'm just throwing out all possibilities just so that it's in the air.
Just. Yes, sir. Look at this, it looks like the. Looks like all the buildings, how many acres are in between the sides of it? It looks like maybe a couple acres.
In between where the structures are in like the backend of the neighbors?
Kitchen and the wedding venue. Is this, what's the third one? Is that parking? You got two parking areas?
Yes, sir. I have two parking areas.
Parking area. I mean, so parking, there's not going to be any noise coming from that.
Correct.
So, I mean, it looks like to me the buildings are kind of centered or at least a third of the way over. So I would. I would, I mean, what does that kind of give you?
Yeah.
Four acres on each side before you hit the neighbor's property?
Exactly.
I'm good.
Exactly.
Good luck, man.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate you. I can't wait to try. What's your favorite type of protein?
Everything but liver.
Okay.
He's a steak man.
Steak, nice. Steakless, gotcha.
Ribeyes kill me.
Ribeye? Oh, man.
Ribeyes and lobs.
What's on the?
Laurie, if you couldn't pick mine.
No, I was gonna add, yeah, no, I'm just looking at the map and I'm looking at the right side. On the left side, what's, what, what? Maybe Katie knows. What's over here on the left hand side of the property line?
It's, um, that's, I, for the most part, relatively vacant. It's mostly wooded with a little pasture.
It is a vacant property.
And I'm just looking, I'm just thinking out loud about location of the buildings.
And what I just said, sorry, I didn't get it. I was talking to the rest of everybody. What I'm passing around now, guys. Is what I call the grill lounge. I'm not sure if y'all are familiar with Trigger Grills. It's a pellet grill. That's one of my sponsors. I cook a lot for them. So I want to kind of give, you know, a notion to them on the property since they supported my business so far. So that's a little area where I do like cooking classes, Father's Day, do like a brisket trimming class where people can come out and just hang out by the, the pond and just have some good food.
And Justin, it doesn't show on our map, or I may be reading our map wrong, but at the entrance of the property. On the left where your drive is, it shows that there's a home.
Yes, ma'am.
And the space next to that home is part of your property. Then there's another property line. And I thought that second property line all the way to the right also had a home. It doesn't, or it does?
Okay, so we're looking on Wilkerson Mill Road. You'll see on my property outline, there's a lot of trees. It's completely. Nobody has even touched it. And then to the left of that is a little small house. Correct? Is that area on the same page? Okay. And then next to that is the main entryway for my property. Until left of that is a newly renovated house. Cause when I purchased the property two years ago, it was really broke down, but they did a really good job renovating. So I have. Immediate neighbors to the left and right of the main driveway of the property.
So the 8701 is just not showing the, the home on the map we have in the packet is what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
That's correct. Most of the homes on Petersburg are quite a bit further up. They'd probably be off of this map anyway. Not all of them.
Yeah.
Like up on the other side.
Justin, the reason I didn't meet with you.
Yes, sir.
Was because I'd spoke with Mike about this very briefly.
Yes, sir.
And then once I saw this, I was fine with it.
Thank you, sir.
And some people's driveways do run next to other people's property lots.
Yeah, and I have, yeah, I have some good precautions in front of it just because that neighbor that sits directly in front. In between my two entryways did have a, a dog. It's not, I don't, haven't seen the dog in the yard a lot, but. Just for people who turn in, you know, I'm saying, I just wanted to respect her privacy as well as, you know, the people that come in. So. I did plan on putting a tree line or fencing off that area just so that she doesn't feel or see, you know, it's out of sight, out of mind. Cause she's not going to hear anything at the front of the property. And I did a personal test for myself, but in that same test, I discovered that the neighbors on. On Petersburg Road heard some of the music by the lake when I had my 28th birthday. So, but that's been discussed. We talked about that. But if anybody has any questions, you know, I'm, I'm here to answer everything.
So one more question for Katie. Um, Katie, where he's got the driveway shown on the property coming off from Wilkerson Mill Road. Is there a buffer requirement? Because it looks like at that neighborhood house, it's almost touching their property line. So I can't really follow where the property line is. Or if that's in the buffer or what the dash line means. Am I saying that right? Yeah.
That's the existing drive. So. Wanted to relocate that.
Just kind of.
But it is that, it, it looks like it touches the corner of the property. Those dotted lines around there are the building setback.
So there is no setback requirement for a private drive then? Okay.
Well, you could, you could have one.
It also might be helpful to note that there's going to be a 200 foot tree buffer on either side of the property. Kind of between the neighbors and. Where the, the buildings are going to be.
They're already, or would that be added?
Most of, I haven't been back there, but it's mostly wooded back there.
Very wooded. Okay. I haven't. So you can kind of see a trail that goes back down to the lake. From the beginning of the property, everything to the right, I haven't even been, I haven't been able to walk. It's too thick. So. I plan on leaving it that way. Honestly, everything that I'm building out is more so towards the left. Cause that's what I've been able to visualize.
I'm just looking at the aerial right now. It looks like where you're putting your kitchen is where there is a little clearing as you're getting close to the lake, right?
Yeah, there's a like a little double wide.
And is your open air thing where the tables are, is that between the kitchen and the wedding venue? That's what I didn't, couldn't see where it is on the map.
Yeah, great question. So if this is the kitchen, the wedding venue is right here. And then right here would be the open area.
Is it between the kitchen and?
Yes, ma'am. Between the kitchen and the wedding venue. And then in the middle of everything, I'll have like a nice grass courtyard area.
You know, anything else?
No, I don't know. I should, so when you're, you were selecting sort of looking to see where you were going to locate everything. You went, like you're somewhat centered, I guess, but towards current houses versus the other side. Is that just the topography? Or as far as where you selected the site for the wedding venue versus further left?
Yeah. So I, I haven't walked, I haven't seen it. But I'd like to. Yeah, yeah, you're welcome to come out. We'll take a nice little walk. Uh, so when I selected where I was going to put everything. I battle with two things. I want to put it up towards the front because that's where most open land was. Or did I want to put it in the back? And when I was trying to actually move closer to the property, I looked at a house that's literally connected on the corner. I don't know the address, but it's on Petersburg Road. And that's when I realized how close these houses were to the top of the property, which is why I dug a little bit further back by the lake. Because it's a little bit more buffer from where I plan on putting something to, you know, any of the neighbors on Petersburg Road. So that's kind of how I came up with that idea.
And he's probably 200 feet from his property line and the nearest house then into the lots on Petersburg are a good 2, 300 feet further. There's 500, 4, 500 or more feet away. It's a couple of football fields for most of them, yeah.
No, the zoning requires, if you look there, seven, two, just below that green section requires 200 feet from any residential used property on his side. So. Any evaluation of a site plan when he's developing and building will be evaluated.
It's not as far as we say. That's 200 feet from there to there.
Yeah, the only thing that I've personally come up with in my head is like, all right, whoever owns the backside of this pond. Like what would their thoughts be when they're viewing from their side looking in? And I talked to Mike about this. And then one of my friends, I haven't met him personally, but we had some phone convo. His name is Mr. Andy. When one of my friends was fishing, he met him because he is, him and his son was fishing on the opposite side. So we talked it up. He just asked what I planned on doing. He was pretty cool with everything. He wished me the best of luck. He wanted to try some of the food. So. You know, I've had that talk with the direct person who's connected to that other side of that pond.
So, so a handful of people came to the meeting, but.
Yeah.
I don't know if they represented all of the residents along your property line. Have you had a chance to actually talk to each of those restaurant residents?
No, the only time I've had a chance to speak with anyone was earlier in the week. And a lot of the members that showed up said they represent majority of their family or neighboring parts because they have the same concerns or the same interests. I believe I was able to address a lot of concerns, but I don't think we got to a final solution to something. But I did get a phone call from a neighbor Saturday and she just told me that, you know, she heard about every, or she. Left a little early, but she asked her and her husband, listened through everything. She just wanted to let me know that she had my support or that she, I had her support. And the neighboring people that equates about 16 acres. So that was nice to hear. Cause she was the one who had some concerns as well. But it seems like I was able to articulate that pretty well.
So from a process perspective, right? This is the first read at our, at our meeting this month. We won't be doing anything. We'll get a next action from the planning commission. They'll make. Positions at the following month's council meeting. Right now, all his buffers and everything are within line.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Is IGA with Fulton County Dana?
Yes. So this is an agreement to contract with Fulton County for this municipal election November 7. In the agreement you'll see on page four, the estimated prorata share of the cost of the election. Is a little over $9,700. Also not addressed in this agreement, but I am working with Fulton County. If they conduct our elections to get City Hall established as a early voting place. There's some upgrades that we'll need to do to the room here, but I've talked to Darryl and Robbie and I mean, we should be able to do those. Might have to change some commission. Meeting schedules just because of early voting, but I mean, they may not go into the evening. Well. This room will be locked up. So yeah, might be some changes to schedule. So I'm currently working on that with them as well.
Commissions can probably meet one of the other rooms too, right?
Right.
Cool. So that is, that is their charge, $9,700?
Yeah, it's an estimated charge because it's based on the estimated costs and it's based on our number of registered voters. When they did the election last year or the last time, I think it was 12,000 at that time. And I mean, it was. We didn't get a second bill for up charges or anything like that.
Yeah, it's good. You know, the north side has all come together to do their own elections due to the cost of Fulton County's.
Milton County, Milton, the city of Milton is, but Fulton County is still running the other elections for Alpharetta and Roswell, many of those.
Well, I mean, I just read an article where I were not disputing you, but it said there was a lot more than that. And it was because the price had just gone up like quadruple. So I was wanting to make sure that our price was in line. Cause I mean, what do we have 1,500 registered voters?
Um, it's, it's actually over 2,000 now.
2,000?
Yeah.
Again, $9,700. That's, that's not bad.
That's a person. Anything else on that? No? All right. Next up is the IGA for. Electrical services. Who's?
I mean, I don't mind. I wasn't prepared mentally to do this, but it should be pretty easy. So the, when we purchased the property behind us in the house over here in Hamilton Redwine. The church, Rico Unitime Methodist Church was, had been using that well and had an agreement with Rocky Reeves. They are continuing to use it. And last year we established a formal agreement that they would pay. Nominal, I mean, the electric to run the well is very nominal. I think they're paying $10 a month. So that's just up for renewal.
And that is it for the relatively short meeting. We have, uh, next up is a list of several presentations and things for us to work session. We have had over the course of the last few months. A number of meetings where people have come in talking about. Neighbors, you know, 100 yards from their house, shooting for hours and hours and hours, hours a day. And, and we've had several conversations up here about it. And at the last meeting, one of the council members suggested to the city attorney that. He put up a straw man for some conversation on the subject of what a city might do to mitigate that issue. I'll just say, you know, we're being very clear here that at least from my perspective, there's no interest in. Regulating people's right to have guns, to carry guns, to use them for hunting and all the things that people do with them to protect their homes, all of that. And. There's a recognition that sometimes in a community, when you're living right next to another house and you're shooting for 10 hours a day. It can have a really serious impact on someone else's quality of life. And. No gun owner that I know does that. Thoughtful gun owners don't do that. Thoughtful hunters don't do that. And yet. You know, you have people sometimes in the community that aren't being thoughtful. So that's why the city attorney has given us something to talk about. And I'm just going to leave that there and see what people's thoughts are. If they have any, because I, you know.
It has two components, right? So it looks like, so it's got distance and, and. And the time of day. So, yeah. So we're limiting. And it's not impacting hunting because it's saying except when hunting. So that's, that's its own separate issue.
Yeah, the state regularly time. So.
Yeah.
Right, Rick, I've got a question about that, right? Cause the state does have some preemptions. On what cities are allowed to do around anything that has to do with guns. And my guess is as the city attorney, you've probably considered that as you're drafting this, right?
This doesn't talk about carrying guns, possessing guns, whatever else. Just about where you are not allowed to shoot. And then what, what time you're allowed to do basically target practice.
Right. And cities are allowed to regulate those things.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it does say it prohibits the local, uh, discipline from enacting and forcing laws more restrictive than the state ordinances.
And there are no state ordinances on, on distance or whatever else like this.
There's none.
A lot on hunting. That's the.
Right. I've been registered.
Away from hunting, stayed away from possessing firearms.
Um, I'm sorry, go ahead. So my only comment is, uh. The 200 yards limitation for, for shooting seems like it would. Prevent a lot of people. And you'd be surprised, I'm on five acres and I went out there and measured, we would not be able to shoot our guns. And we wouldn't even go out there and we don't, we don't shoot much, but we, we try them out once a year to make sure they're still working. I, I think that might be overly restrictive. On the other hand, I, I don't know anything about guns as far as their distance. If you made it smaller, if. So I heard there were two issues. The rapid fire and it's continuing for a long period of time. And some homes feel like they're too close to other homes and they feel their safety is in danger. So I think the rapid fire might be addressed by having some kind of, I don't know, time period on it. You can't. Target shoot, target shoot, not, huh, target shoot for more than two or three hours at a time or some, I don't know if that would be an option. But the distance is, I don't know what to suggest about that because I don't have the knowledge or experience. Other than to say, I, I would think there'd be a number of people that. Would object to that.
Yeah, it's, well, there's two things, right? There's, there's whatever you're doing, isn't it even enforceable, right?
Right.
And I mean, we, we were talking about this earlier, you know, we've had cases here in the city where people had a range and were shooting. And shot the horse that lived next door.
Oh, gosh.
That was something that happened here a few years ago. There have been other cases where, you know, people have bullet holes in their walls as neighbors are shooting. Now to me, you've already got the ability to do something about that, right? That's reckless endangerment or what is that?
Yeah, we, there's already code sections, both city ordinances and state code sections that cover the, those, those instances.
Right. So that issue feels to me like it's a little more in check that the question of, you know, whether you've got a good range or not, right? Like right next door to somebody shooting for five or six hours.
I get it. I mean, it's, it can be a nuisance. I mean, it was like I said, the guys across the river from me.
Yeah.
It's nothing for them to go through 1,000 rounds, two hours from 10 PM to 12 PM. But you know.
Are you getting foxhole? Is that foxhole or is that?
It's just right across the river.
Right.
But I will say this, you know, that's why a lot of people move to the country. So they can fire their firearms. And yeah, they have to be, you know, safe about it. And I don't recall, I mean, I guess a stray horse went down. But I mean, other than that, I don't know that anybody has been unsafe with it. I know the, the problem that we had. Chief Little said, he didn't say anything that involved a safety issue.
Well, yeah, in, in, in that particular one, I went out with chief and they had a, a berm set up. They had, and they were firing it away from. The, how they weren't firing, they were firing it.
Into the berm.
Into, into the berm. And the berm was facing, you know, the back of the property. It wasn't facing the road or wasn't facing other, it was facing.
And that's all you can ask of somebody.
Right.
You know, I guess, I mean, the only thing I know, it's amazing, you're running off 1,000 rounds and you ride by there. Something's not appropriate. I mean, maybe we can. Something's not appropriate. I mean, maybe we can give them some advice. But I mean, as far as them having the ability to shoot a firearm, unless they're a felon, I mean, what can we do?
Kevin, when, when you guys go out to a place like that and, and somebody's shooting, right? We all know, right? Where ear protection for a reason. If the neighboring house is close enough that it's violating the noise ordinance, that's a noise ordinance issue already anyway, right?
Sure, sure. And you know, the ordinances also already indicate distance and, and in the noise. And I do know that a couple officers have cited people shooting the night. The night is, well, that's already in the ordinance, right? You know, but to Richie's point, unless even if someone calls nine one one, you know, by the time we get out there, they're not shooting. If they're not actively shooting.
Right.
And even if it's at night, I knew, like, you know, that, you know, had a couple officers were called out a month ago or so, and they, they were out there for a while talking with the individuals. And so, yeah, it's, to Richie, it's, it, it's hard to enforce. But, you know, I mean, I also understand.
Let me say right.
Yeah, equality of life. Yeah, and, yeah.
In this proposed wording, Rick, you mentioned I mean, the, the time. So then, is that because we don't have, you're saying we have time restrictions, but then, but you're.
It's already on there. I'm sorry.
How does this apply differently?
Late to the noise ordinance.
Okay. Is it, but it's not sunset. Isn't it like eleven at night or ten at night?
Before sunrise.
Right.
Is, I think it says.
It's something.
It's like before sunrise to, to like, like thirty minutes after sun, sunset, something like that. Yeah.
That's the hunting regulation.
The noise ordinance, I thought was later.
Yeah.
Well, that, that follows the noise ordinance, about less than twenty minutes.
Yeah, something like that.
You know, you have five before light, five after.
Right.
So, I mean.
Well, and there are instances where you can hunt at night.
Not big.
Yeah, you can hunt pigs at night. You can hunt gator down south at night. I think you can hunt turkeys at night.
I'm behind my house for pigs. I've got a pig, bro.
Yeah.
You know, I wandered through the neighborhood.
Right.
So I mean, that's.
Well, and also pigs are, there's no hunting season on pigs. They're, they're considered a nuisance and you can, there's no, no bag limit and no season.
Yeah.
So.
So noise, okay.
I mean, I do feel for the people that have somebody shooting next to their house for, they're.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just can't, you know, take away somebody else's right because somebody else doesn't point the fact that somebody's shooting. I mean, that's their constitutional right.
I don't know if it's.
I mean.
It's pretty loud, disturbing.
I mean, I, I get it, but I mean, if you're shooting during daytime, I'd rather you be shooting at daytime than at night. You know, at nighttime, I'd imagine it's more dangerous unless you've got some real optics, you know, those run you. So like Kevin said, you know, hunting pigs, fair game year round.
So, so we're saying then, when the sun goes to, at sunset or five minutes after sunset, you cannot be shooting, be doing target practice anymore. Is that, is that what our noise ordinance would preclude as it stands now?
I'd have to like read the noise ordinance to see that.
I would think so unless you have a permitted shooting range that's lit up at night or something.
Kevin, right now, what would be a thing, something, somebody called you at, you know, an hour after sunset and said.
The noise ordinance.
My house, you're forcing.
Sure.
But if somebody just shot at one time, I don't think that would sound like an.
It's not constant, repetitive.
Yeah, I'm constantly shooting armadillos at night. I dig up my yard.
Mine.
Probably not going to stop that.
But you're not shooting thirty rounds.
Right.
I'm not shooting a three hundred either. I'm shooting twenty two.
There you go.
Three hundred.
Oh, well, that's, that's, yeah. Again, most people that are actually hunting are not the people that we're talking about.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ruby, I, I'm sorry, I, I'm not wanting to forget that you're there. Do you have any thoughts on this while we're talking about it?
Um, the only thing is, like I said, you know, you just said the right thing is that the people we are talking about are not the people, the ones who's doing this. These are some people coming in that's doing this. So if you know what you've been doing all the time, there's nothing wrong with that. So, you know, everybody has their rights.
I'm just not sure where to go with this conversation. I mean, we can, we could regulate it further, but I don't know that there's a will to do that in this community. And, you know, again, while I feel incredibly sympathetic to somebody.
You definitely pass the ordinance, whether or not you can enforce it or whatever else, different sort, no time, police officers get there, they stop. And those are always challenges in many different ordinances.
Right. And I don't know that having this would change that in the same situation. If they're making a lot of noise, they go out there and if they're done making noise, nothing can be done. It's not going to change if we have the ordinance.
We're already enforcing.
We're already enforcing it as much as we can.
Just the council, y'all's decision, obviously, but we're after it now, let's put it up on the shelf. If we need to bring it back down, if we have issues or whatever, we can modify it then. But at least I pulled together, anything I could pull together, give you guys something to talk about.
Yeah, I don't think there's a will to enforce it at this point.
Thank you.
All right, great. Moving on. Next thing was a, we had a work program as a part of the twenty one comp plan. And I wanted to give an update. There were like twenty five items on that. And was asked to kind of update where we were on them. And it was a good exercise to actually go back through. And I'll just read what they are and what my read on the process or statuses. We've talked about some of those today too, because some of these are things that they're working through community development. And then also just, you know, as, as I'm walking through this, to try to get an impression from council, if there are some reasons that they want to pull forward or not. Now, you know, I'll say, we have had a work list after each of the comp plan updates we've done from the first one. You're required to put a work list together. The work list is a list of all the things that you wish you had the money and time and people to do. It is not necessarily the things that you can get done. We have a small planning staff and they're very busy with, you know, applications and things like that. So I just preface this by saying it's not all done and some of it may not ever get done. Review the planning tools that accomplish the conservation and preservation goals in the city. That's an ongoing process. The TDR work that we did was a part of that process. So, you know, I'm saying that that's something that is ongoing. There are some issues, like we were talking about some issues the other day around, you know, planning that coming back to the fore. You know, part of that is something we've done and there's still more conversation going on about that.
What else needs to be done about it?
Well, you know, like, for example, some of the conversations that you and I were having with Mike yesterday, right? About some issues around the lot size issue, right? We've talked about that in here again. You know, the idea of maybe having some more conversation on that would be a thing. The biggest thing on that was getting the TDR ordinance actionable. We've done that. So that's the biggest thing in that one is done, checked off. Study attainable housing options. We have done nothing on that yet. You know, the feeling is that right now, housing affordability isn't our biggest issue tax or, I'm sorry, we just haven't focused on that one yet. There will maybe come a time where that becomes a bigger priority, but I know, for example, that's something that Steve talks about often. They have a hard time finding places for people that work in the restaurants and whatnot to live. So, you know, that is something that is an issue, but it's just not been our biggest priority. Third one was work with the Chedoo Chiel Country Conservancy to solidify transfer development rights program. I'm checking that one off. We did that. Continue to refine the vision for Campbell and Crossfire Roads and consider the development of an overlay district or rezoning based on the Campbell and Crossroads Plan. We've talked with the Atlanta Regional Commission about that a little bit. That's one of those things that we'll really have to do. A CDA for, apply for a CDA and get one of those grants that will get planning help in to do that because that's a couple of thousands of dollars process that we can't really afford. We need experts for.
So are some of these things you're just listing as, as not a priority at this time? So we don't have to keep drilling back to it for a while? Or is this like an annual update or?
This is the work program that came out. This will be the one that's in front of us until we do the next comp plan. And, you know, this would be, if somebody dropped, if Robbie bought a lottery ticket and won and gave it to the city, then we could do a lot more of this, but with our funds and our staff right now, a lot of it is kind of wishful thinking.
Specific, specific to Campbellton, of course, that was a, the original project was one we did in partnership with the city of South Fulton. They've had a lot of staff turnover. It's difficult to coordinate with them on anything. I did, the CDA programs typically have not written code, which is a big part of the next step. I actually had a recent conversation with them where they, they assured me that that would be considered as a follow-up to a CDA. So we'll be looking at that. We, the, the deadlines passed just a little bit earlier this year. So early next year, we plan to probably, assuming we have the capacity and it's working out, go ahead and apply for that to, to get that maybe finished up next year. So I wouldn't take it off the list right now. I think, I think there's some promise there.
So Mike, does it, does it make a difference that, that development is, is, it sounds like they're getting, ready to put the shovel in the ground in South Fulton across from Charlie's?
So, so that wasn't part of my conversation with them. I know I acknowledged in our conversation, we all, we all agreed about the issue with working with the city of South Fulton. I think that that would make it appealing that, because something is happening up there. I don't know that would be a major factor in their consideration of.
There's a, there's another piece of that too. I've been speaking to the executive director of the Atlanta Regional Commission at length and also the head of their planning department about this problem. It's like the comp plan work, right? They come into a city, they help you write a beautiful comp plan. And then they don't help you make your code match the comp plan. We've done a heck of a lot of work in our town on that, but most of the cities around us have not. It's part of the problem in South Fulton and they agree that it is an issue. So I think we will get a CDA for this, but we haven't had partners at South Fulton yet to talk to to make it happen. That one's actually one that we're working on. Mike, we, we have the, the Rico thing on here as a separate thing, so I'm going to skip that. We're obviously working on that, but I'll let you talk about that when we get there. Pursue funding for road and infrastructure maintenance. I mean, that's an ongoing and constant thing. Darryl, Robbie, you know, we're looking at grants for bridges and it is a continual ongoing thing. Develop rural.
Can I ask, sorry, um, so under that, under that bullet point, is the bridge on Atlanta Union Road floating in there with any progress?
That, that is one of the ones that we're working on. There's also one that we're working on with them at the top of Cochran Mill Road at, at Campbellton bumper, at one fifty four. But the pot hole always is with a little tree farm is, there's a couple of bridges actually that we're working on. Trying to get funding for, through various federal programs, state programs, whatever. We met with GDOT recently. I mean, it's an ongoing conversation that is always ongoing. It'll always be ongoing, probably. The next one was develop rural paved and gravel road standards. And that's something that we've actually done. Darryl has put that together. That's something that's actually now been implemented. And for example, when a developer comes in and they're doing a section of the street somewhere, we're very specific about, okay, it's this kind of street. It means this much gravel, it's this much asphalt, whatever. It used to be kind of the Fulton County standard or whatever it was, but we've now defined it ourselves. Development branding program for Chedoo Chiel's, we'll be talking about that a little bit later too. That's an ongoing process. Explore options to increase tourism. So some of that was done in that program that we did with the state, I forget the name of the agency, that, that thing that we did. But part of this too is something that the CDB has now got in their scope. So creating the CBB was really the biggest thing that we've done to, to make that happen.
So is that a done thing or in progress?
I mean, it's in progress because they're still working on it, but you know, we've done the biggest part of our part of it, I think. There are a couple then around, like, you know, pursue an independent outfitter for kayak, bike, other recreational items. And we've talked about that, Parks Commission's been talking about that too, probably more important once the second rip. Place for people to go back and forth between, but there has been conversation about that. Pursue opportunities to support improved performance and perception of educational options. That is an ongoing thing too. I've been talking to the superintendent of Fulton County Schools several what the future school needs in Chedoo Chiel's look like and, you know, how we would want them to participate. Their correct for the moment responses, of course, you don't need anything yet. Now, you know, I don't know. I don't know that that's actually correct. That's the way they look at it. Update the city sign ordinance is one. We have not done that yet. That's on the work list for planning. Engage Atlanta Fulton County for infrastructure leading to the villages, Hamlets, the development notes. That is something that has been basically done and mapped. They're in the process of constructing that, getting rights and way together to do that to, like, the expected development notes along the parkway to the one down close to Sam and Bee, the one up in Campbellton, close to both the Campbellton development that we'd be doing and the park development potentially up there. And that's both water and sewer. Adopt a groundwater recharge protection ordinance. We have not done that yet. Develop a historic resources plan. That's something that we've talked with the historic commission about a little bit. That is probably something that, that, because another thing that we're talking about later today is commission priorities for council. That might be a charge. They're working on a particular thing right now that I think they want to get done. Which is the historical marker signs, but that may be the next thing for them. Determine if the Chedoo Chiel's Greenway Trail is feasible, is currently planned, or if the resources could be used for similar purposes. Talked about this several times in council meetings, that, that money is likely not ever going to come here. Maybe we're still hoping, right?
It could. It's technically still programmed for the, the southern section below Cochran Mill Park. As the development picture continues to change, we're talking about Campbellton, we're talking about potentially the, the project there in, in that area. We're sort of letting it ride until we get a better picture of what's really going to happen. And, but there, there is an opportunity still, probably an opportunity. Federal government has been pulling back earmarks from that era. But not this one. And I suspect it's because it's been partially spent. Other counties have spent it. So still kind of hanging out there. And last word is that it's still maybe available.
We're not sure is the problem. Now, you know, in, in that same vein, there has already been, or just recently, we started against conversations because the, the landowners and what people are doing on the properties that were in parts of that plan are becoming more clear. We've just started some conversations about the southern path. Remember, it's, it was basically a triangle as well, kind of like the scenic highway thing. And the land holdings and, you know, the farm at developments and things like that that are happening on the south side are opening up an opportunity to maybe string that trail back together, maybe not on the original alignment. And that was one of the conversations we always had. That original path alignment was just like, we're going to draw lines, but we don't really consider who owns the land and what they're doing. The reality was always going to be that, you know, sympathetic landowners would like something happened. And that's the way it was going to be, we're going to be taking people's land or anything, so. Okay. And then next is expand the current parks, rec, trail plan to promote awareness of its recommendations to the community. Again, Parks Commission's been doing a lot of, of work on that. I don't know that that specific wording, I'll, I'll make sure you have that again, right? Just so that we, we're all looking at the same thing. Research and explore incorporating a science program for historical and cultural sites in the context of the wayfinding program. That is what the historic commission has been working on right now, a historical marker program. There at the point now, I think it's finalizing some of the text and, and, you know, that is hopefully coming soon. Improve the availability of data to the city's website. This includes information about historic and cultural sites. And I think we've got some of that already on the Parks app, but I don't know that that ties back to the website. Again, something that we've done partly, but not probably tied back as well as we should. Our website is not as strong as it should be. Begin developing maintenance and operations plan for all city-owned historic sites. That has not happened yet. I don't think we've, again, that's something that probably needs to be happening between Parks Historic and our public work staff.
Have we identified them all yet?
I don't think so. No, they're, they're doing, they have been doing some of that, but explore budgeting funds to complete a citywide survey of historic resources. So we haven't done that yet. And that's, that's the, I know that the historic commission does have access to some money though, so I know that they're talking about ways to use that.
I think they have a list of that in the comp plan, that, that, the, the historic sites and.
That, that, that were known of in the comp plan and that was that South Fulton survey that was passed along to them. But there are. But there are more, right? And the idea of compiling all that was what this was about. And I, I know there've been conversations about it because I've been in meetings and the sort of mission where they talked about it, but I don't know where we are. I don't think we've actually knocked that down. Review and update the scenic byway corridor management plan. We have not done that.
So you were going to ask, um, Georgia State.
Yeah, no, and so the state of.
They're going to do that.
We actually have, oh, you mean. University.
No, 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 no. It, because it's, it's the state of Georgia scenic byway plan. And they initiated the corridor management plan and then just left it once we formed a city. So you were going to follow up with them to say.
I did follow up with them.
Do we need this? Are we?
Yeah, yeah, I will follow up on that specifically. I've actually been trying to get the name changed. That's. The Chattahoochee Hills Scenic Byway. But I, I know I have the right contact now, so I can ask about that piece as well. Research policies on location utilities, infrastructure. And develop recommendations for the updated appropriate development codes. That's a part of our zoning anyway, really, honestly.
It's underground. We don't have a lot of control.
I mean, that's, that's actually coming back more to the things that we've been pushing for.
Didn't you switch line to stop lying where it is?
We're controlling how it happens though. Pursue a community center location. Let's go. I mean, I know that that's in there. I feel like we have community center and another one. Both of which are underutilized. We have, you know, pavilions that are underutilized. And we don't have a lot of money. So the idea of doing another one seems. That's, that's what I think too. That, that one doesn't feel like a priority. I will, I will type all this up or type it up. I will. I will get this to everybody just as a.
So what's not on there in, I don't know, it seems like I remember talking about it in the last comp plan update, maybe not. Got on that sheet, the whole senior services, because Fulton County's now two months behind in getting the. M O U with us, right?
Yeah, and I sent her an email about that. She responded about something entirely different.
Kind of moving kind of slow. That was like, what's the. So they were going to provide some level of senior services and just have an agreement with us that they would do that. They haven't said what yet, but they sent us some initial language, maybe at the end of last year in January and then never finalized it.
And I've, I've now followed up with her three or four times and she finally responded, but just to talk about how good our luncheon was and all of that, not, not with the actual M U. So anyway, that was that update. Next up, I had asked Steve, who is the chair of the C V B to come in and just give us an update on what they're doing and. All of that. Thank you for being here. Yeah, please. Thanks.
Yeah, okay, go, go. All right, uh, this gives you just a little bit of a visual idea. There's the cheese. Okay. Let it roll. So as, as you know, we have the act that was passed the end of last year. To establish the convention bureau for Chad Hills. This allows us to hit the next. Thanks. I don't have a hello. Okay, so this is how the money is divided. And you, you know, this, this group, and so on the far right, the cup has been going to the convention bureau. And so this will now come to fund a local bureau and that. Money is restricted differently than, than the other money is. Next. Here are the board members and, and who was appointed from the various districts and at large. It is a great group with some deep knowledge. And so I think it's amazing who lives in the city that has knowledge and experience. So very pleased with that. Next. We had our briefing meeting here at City Hall with the mayor and manager. Briefing everyone on what the responsibilities were, what this meant. And at that point, we elected officers. I luckily was elected chairman and my guy Gretto vice, vice chair on that. And Julianne West is secretary or treasurer. Robbie's going to serve as secretary, taking notes and what have you. So it's a great group of, of people with great spirit. Next. We had a Bill Beeson, who is a former head of a Chamber of Commerce and Development Authority. Happens to live in the town. And so we asked him if he would facilitate sort of totally new eyes on the subject, the city. The assets and challenges. And so he, we had a half day retreat. We hosted that at Serenby. As our guests and he did a great job of facilitating the issues and guiding everyone where we wanted to go. Next. We had presentations from everyone who. Has an, a facility of any kind that attracts tourists as well as some of the things going on with the city. So everyone participated to give everyone a, an idea of what was going on. Next. We looked at all of the assets and challenges that we had. To really decide where, where, where we wanted to focus. It's, it's relatively limited money compared to a, a marketing budget. And what, what are we really marketing and, and how? And, and so that, that's a huge subject. And we, we, we came to the conclusion, go to the next, that. One of the, what we really needed was a brand that communicated the uniqueness, but. More complicated to really communicate in a simple image that we are. Both preserving the agrarian economy and the agrarian appearance, but also welcoming development. And, and how do we communicate that balance with some sort of a mark and image? And how do we use that from webpages? To when we get to the point where we have money to actually market and attract. How do we do that to attract all the various folks and especially looking at some of the things emerging? The Riverlands Park, what's going to happen with the put in and takeouts along the Chattahoochee River. A lot to look at if we're going to have a mark that's going to communicate this and move it on. So we decided that we really needed to put an R F P out to, to understand. To really get a professional group and, and move forward with that. And so a committee of three headed by Kara did a great job of really researching and putting a great R F P together. That was completed and sent out. Everyone sent in agencies that they suggested, plus it's posted on. How do you post it? You post all R F Ps somewhere? That's where it is. And so that was posted this last Monday. And so we are starting to get questions. We have a few of the big agencies that said, thank you very much. But we don't think you have the budget to hire us. They're probably right. But at least we gave them a chance and in the future, we can have something where somebody says, why didn't you ask so and so? They're great. So we, we tried to. We, we send down, I think, to twenty-four agencies, both in, in Georgia and across the country. So we, those are doing, we go through a question process. And then we will hopefully let the contract, I had that date on there. And then this summer, we will have a kickoff and listing session. So we'll, we'll, we'll post that. So there's really public input on this so that the agencies we hire understand. We're also looking at possibly doing a, a survey and we'll see where, where the money is. But both of opinions, both of Chattahoochee Hill residents and metro Atlanta residents. Compiling this and see what people's image is of the area. So we better know where we are. And what kind of message we can get out. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Tom, this is separate than this, like Chat Hills brand, City Hall brand.
I want to shoot myself in the right.
Well, no, we're going to talk about this. Robbie, you want to talk about kind of where we are with the thing that we. Because we have this kind of light, you know, semi paid, semi voluntary.
Branding number two hundred and three version.
Yes, here I am. See if the mic works. Okay, because, well, evening, Mayor Council, come up to the mics, they're being behind the scenes. The branding that we're, we're about to talk about is what we started, what the mayor talked about was, you know, the discounted rate. Because we were able to talk to a, a local citizen, help us out and work through that branding last year. And so they went through that process, interviewed some citizens, talked to some council, came back, got some feedback, went back, talked some more, got some more feedback. And then started pairing that information down. And, you know, at the end of the day, you know, the branding wasn't really the good, a good fit. From what we were seeing. And so we decided we still have that information. It's on, we own it. It's proprietary information. So we didn't really determine what the identity is. But the, the cool thing that's happening right now through the C V B, and by the way, Steve talked about it, but this is a robust group of individuals. I'm just, I've been to the meetings. I'm just blown away by the caliber of, of people on this, this C V B. It's, they, they hit the ground running, like you said, and Kara wrote, I'm getting responses because I'm the one that sends out the R F P. And I'm getting responses from the people like, this is the best R F P I've ever read kind of thing. I was like, man, I need to redo ours like Kara did hers. So are theirs. But anyway, they're going to, they're working on that branding process now. So it's not going to be our brand. That's the C V B brand. They're a separate entity. However, there's going to be some, obviously some connectivities to us because it's still Chat Hills. It's Chat Hills Convention and Visors Bureau. So we'll be able to, you know, take off on that again and go back and help. Reform our identity with the information we got from brand culture and then the information that they get and probably hone back in on this is what I'm thinking. After they do their exercise. So it's going to be a win-win, I think.
So my concern is, yeah, we were stuck and not completely appreciative. We're appreciative, but not satisfied with what we got. But we had that decision to say, let's cut our losses. So I'm a little nervous. We've turned this over to another group and we don't have that same thing because. They're branding their group, but in essence, they're also branding the city, but we don't have a say in it. So that makes me nervous.
Well, again, it's going to be their brand, you know, so they'll have their own website. And for instance, you know, like I'm not ordering name tags for them because. Their logo is not, it's, that's our logo. It's not their logo. So they're going to have their own identity.
But where, where are we left at, right? We're going to just stick with what we've got in the city for the moment. This may inform if we want to do something else, right? But that we weren't going to spend any more money going down the road. It wasn't getting anywhere. And, and, you know, we can revisit that whenever we want to. Again, to your point, I think we get some data from what they're doing.
And it's interesting to like, we, we're not telling them what the budget is because we don't necessarily know. We kind of have an idea what it is. But there are some of the, we've sent twenty-four R F Ps out. We've got a lot of responses. About fifty percent of the respondents said they're either too busy, they don't have the bandwidth, or they only work with million dollar type branding. So we're kind of here. So they backed out because they're just, we're not a big enough budget for them to do the work. So we're finding that, but I'm going to give a report to the, to the, to C V B tomorrow at the end of the business day on where we are with what the responses are now. I keep a spreadsheet on it. So I'll update them on that. But I've been updating the chairman the whole time. So he's been aware.
All right, stay up there.
Yeah, we got more issues. Yes, sir.
Give us a quick update on your grant writer.
We, uh, we, we have a grant writer that we kind of call upon when we, we need grants, we think we're looking at ones we have inside people. I know that, you know, Kevin works on grants and the police department for body cameras and such. I found out recently that she doesn't know yet, but she's our, our, our. Our quasi kind of default grant writer over here. Katie has been successful in writing grants. Federal grants are a little more difficult. We don't have a grant writer per se. I've got, I did last summer, I was like, let me just go out and, and get some quotes from stuff. So I got a quote, a lot of people didn't respond, but one group was called Sharpshooter Grant Writers. And they're like a hundred twenty-five dollars an hour kind of deal. And, you know, there's a lot of hours that go into it and such. So those, those groups are out there. By happenstance, and this is just kind of pie in the sky, there's, there's an individual that I know of that works for another municipality. And he's very successful. His, his title, the city manager actually brought him out of community development. He's still a certified city planner and he helps with community development, but he does special projects as assigned by the city manager. And he has got lots of grants, transportation type grants, infrastructure type of grants, big stuff. And he loves Chattahoochee Hills. He's come out here and had lunch a couple of times and, and he just loves this environment. And I'm just like, well, hey. Come on, you know, so he, he's not ready yet because he's got some unfinished business, but I still talk to him weekly. And I'm going to, I'm going to bring him out here. I want him to have lunch with, with Mike and Katie too, because they speak the same language. But again, that, that's something I'm trying to court this individual.
Person you talked about being shared responsibility with some other departments.
Yeah, and that would be next year. But again, that's just, it may, may, may or may not happen. We may need to do something sooner. You know, we do the best we can with what we have. Yeah, he's, the stuff, stuff he gets is, is amazing.
But between now and then, I, I know that Ruby sends a lot of grant. Kind of green flags. Hey, here's one. And a couple of people in the community do that too. Wh- what would you think about contracting with someone for a couple of hours just to noodle through to see what kind of grants are we looking for? Because you kind of have that starting point.
Yeah, or, and we have that Mary Norman helps us, help us out with that. I mean, I've gone through the federal program. There's, I mean, just getting through the. The bureaucracy of the websites is difficult enough. It's, I'm struggling right now to go through grants.gov and get username. And Kevin is, I know, and we're trying to get it because I'm, I'm trying to work on, I think I got to the end of May or about the end of it, to work on the E V charging stations. I want that because there's federal money available, especially for E V charging stations. Put some at City Hall, put some at Cochran Mill Park. It'd be great to have some of those E Vs. I mean, electric vehicles are the thing going on right now. They just opened a battery plant down there off, off west going on twenty. Which is the largest battery recycling plant in the country. And they're, 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 they need two more because they need to, these batteries, you know, I mean. Mike knows what the pre, how many batteries your Prius take. You got to recycle those. So you can't just throw them in your dumpster, you know?
But so, so Robbie, I'm thinking even if we, we get to the point of compiling a spreadsheet, because. When people notify us, it's usually not enough time to actually go after the grant and, and they, they're cyclical. So they come around every year. If we knew when they're coming. Then decided that's something they want to do.
Yeah.
So we, we can. I mean, I, I mentioned that seven, eight years ago. It's a job we should have had a long time ago because we do qualify for just about every grant out there. We just need to know how to fill out the paperwork.
There are some that, I mean, are very difficult to get because you have to show that you, the socioeconomic status is here, not here. Katie can give you horror stories about knocking on doors, asking people, hey, what's your income in order to qualify for a community development block grant? That, that's a reality where there's some, some, some grants that we don't qualify for because our per capita income is too high.
But it's like, it's like the bridge on Atlanta Noonan, right? One of the things we've realized is even when we get a grant, it takes ten years to get it done.
The federal ones take a while.
But I mean, you know, you need to get them in the pipeline. I, I mean, it is something we've got, just for example, a bunch of bridges that need to be replaced. And most of those apply for either some state or federal programming and.
That would be a priority.
So you do have staff here. I mean, you got three of us in the room right now are actively working on some, some grants process. So we'll, we'll see what we can get. And police have been very successful. Fire department's been successful getting safer grants and such where they get firefighting gear, five thousand dollars. Hey, that's five thousand dollars less than we have to spend of taxpayer money, our taxpayer money. So we've been successful on the smaller ones. It's the, the bigger ones are hard to come by. But the, the, the infrastructure bill that was passed last year, I guess it was earlier last year. There's a ton of money there. And the cool thing about this is you don't have to go through the state. You go straight to the federal government. So you don't have to go and fight with, you know, state governments to go through. That's a lot of times they run through transportation grants, run through the Atlanta Regional Commission, but we go straight to the federal government.
So what do we have to do to get in on that?
We're in on it. I mean, we're just, right now, like I was telling Kevin and I are both struggling in different capacities, trying to just get logged into the site. Saying that, look, I'm not Jade DePassa Wally. He's been gone for eight years. I'm a different. We need our login information and sometimes it's, it's, I don't know what's happening with this, but it's. It's, it's, I don't know what's happening with this, but the bureaucracy is, is kinda keeping us, but we're not, we're not giving up, we're just saying there's some hiccups along the way, but. There's money out there and we wanna get it.
And then, before you go.
Yeah, we got other items.
The speed limit and the, the, uh, the wayfinding thing too, with this ongoing incredibly frustrating conversation with G dot.
Yeah, but the mayor and I scheduled a meeting with, uh, like, I mean, G dot officials, and, and Paul Denard was at the last South Fulton Municipal Association meeting. Uh, over there, Lori, we were there, it was in, uh, hey, no, Fairburn, it was in Fairburn, so, you know. He had a lot of, a lot of people had a lot of questions and stuff, we kinda let them have their questions, but we had him on the line. We had a lot of folks, I can get on the list, on their, um, Lennon Perry District Preconstruction Engineer. Megan Wilson, who's our district traffic engineer, where the mayor's talking to come down and look, and ride with him. And he'll show you the roads, and she's interested in coming down here, and she feels like that's necessary, cause she hasn't. Uh, Joshua Higgins, he's planning and program liaison, Trey Kent, he's a district straight aid, state aid coordinator, um, which I work with. By the way, we have to give a plug for the city, um, L M I, Local Maintenance Improvement Grant, we are always the first city to apply and get it. That's five hundred and thirty-seven cities in the state of Georgia, and we just, hey, we're first, we, we're not, we want the money before they, we get it first. But he, he, he commended us on that, and Janine Miller, Director of Planning, so that was a call we had with him for the speed limit changes, and we said, hey. We talked to them, that, we literally said, three years ago, it was March, it was right before Covid hit. That this, this council passed an ordinance to change the speed limits on the roads, and we've had. Engineering Traffic Investigative reports that we spent money on for Kekinwood to do. And they did it, and then they sent us back to do it some more, and we did it again, and they said, well, you need to do some site distance clearing, we took care of that. And they're talking like on ninety-two up there, by, you know, Bukart Farms, where you get the Douglas, I was like, fine, we'll do that, we've done everything to ask for. And they keep, now they say, we gotta do another E T R for bicycle and pedestrian traffic, like, hold on, what are you talking about? Now you, so, the mayor kinda talked to them.
Stand next to the road while I drive by at forty-five miles an hour.
So, and the mayor got the traffic engineer to be on board, so I think that's going to move forward now. You know, the bad news is, we're gonna have to buy a bunch of speed limit signs, but, hey, you passed the ordinance, you deserve to get what you got. Part of that conversation was, was the wayfinding, because we got the lead guy, his name's Buddy, uh, who deals with the wayfinding, said, cause. On a state route, you can't do anything, uh, to put them on, in a right of way, and they're still saying that, we're, we're trying to convince them. I made sure I copied David Bosse with, with A S I signage, which we use, and they.
So I've been driving around taking pictures of all the wayfinding that's in public Georgia State Route right away, as I'm compiling a nice little photo album for them.
Yeah.
To show them.
And we come back with an argument when they say, well, you can't, it can't be a commercial, these aren't commercial destinations, these are tourists that should pay for by tourism dollars. These are destinations, these are, um, tourism destinations, stops, so these are government buildings, we're not directing people to. Zaxby's or McDonald's or something, we're not doing that, that's what they're, in their mind, that's what they're thinking, so we're trying to get that done, the other signs, by the way. Are out and about, and they're getting. Repaired. The ones that had some peeling decals and stuff, and.
And, and then the top and bottom parts are finally being added too, right, the little.
The little finial things, yeah, so it's not done, and because it's not done, uh, and because of all these delays. I'm getting extra things, like, hey, you know, Cherry Blossom Farm wasn't listed on there, that's a destination, let's put that on there, so.
So.
Cherry Hollow, sorry, Cherry Hollow.
Robbie, we've had, um, at least one person ask about the churches. And I know at one point, you know, this was the starting point, and the idea was that the next go around, other businesses or institutes could. Pay to have a sign put on there, but I didn't, you know, I don't know if a church is called a destination, tourist destination, I, I don't know. So that's a question I thought I would ask.
Well, there's, there's limited space, if you look at them, like the one over here on Rico, there's one little spot at the bottom of that, and, uh, and so that's where Cherry. Hollow Farm is gonna go, um, also down the one on, on Hushes the Berry, down on the corner, we'll put Cherry Hollow Farm there. Uh, Raj came in today with, he doesn't have a name for his facility over there of Cochran.
The El Barroso.
He's, he had a different kinda name, he came in and asked today, can I be on the side, and I said, because they're still in progress. And they're, it's not a finished product, cause once it's finished, we're gonna have that, okay, you gotta pay to play, but right now, it's not finished, and I said, you actually fit. In my opinion, of what these signs do, it's, it's a destination, it's a, it's gonna be a, it's a tourism thing, it's a destination, it's a bed and breakfast, possibly.
How to get to their own church, I don't know.
So.
Well, we're not the Vatican, so, you know, right.
On a Wednesday, trying to figure out.
Those things kinda qualify, and you know.
Was a fun gotcha.
But, but having the, the limited, um, space on a sign, I guess is the answer to that, yeah.
And so, you know, at some point, right, those signs are big enough now to carry anything that's going on in the city, at some point, that may not be the case.
It's been a, it's been a process, sir.
You know, when, when we discussed them a, a while back, we said they were gonna be made of wood, so if somebody hit on that, fold over, they. Seems like they're made of steel.
Some are made, the ones that have this steel, um. They, they, well, the ones that have the steel are the ones that are carrying a different flag type of sign, they, they came back and said, look, it didn't charge us extra for it. Because the weight of the sign is heavier on certain style signs, uh, but the other smaller signs, um, are, are gonna be wood, are supposed to be wood. The ones that have a heavier weight at the top, they said, you need to have those metal, that's why you saw those big four by four metal posts that are in the ground first. I was like, oh, wait, hold on a second, and they said, well, they, because of the weight, they have to be the steel, we're not charging, we're gonna give you the wood price for it, I was like, okay, that'll work for me.
But those are all the G dot breakaway ones.
Yeah, they do have to be breakaway, they have to be breakaway signs, so they had to come back and, cause a couple of them weren't, and they come back and redo them at their cost. Obviously. But, yeah, that's the speed limit, okay.
The next thing is, uh, just a quick update on where we are with the Rico, uh, crossroads process.
Had another recent meeting with, with them, um, they've been spending some time, uh, interviewing some of the local residents in these, in there. Uh, in the study area, and, uh, you know, that was always an important part from the very first cop plan. Uh, Rico Crossroads Community was, um, only going to go forward with community support. Um, and, uh, are planning, uh, some public engagement, um, public meeting, at least one, probably more than one. Uh, public engagement meeting, um, here in the near future, they feel like they're wrapping up their work and will, um, be working to schedule that. Um, uh, once we get the, um, the, the thumbs up from them, that, uh, that, that they're ready to, to do that, but I would expect. In the next couple of months, we'll probably have.
And then a presentation or, or meeting with us, a work session, right, I mean.
That's right, so. Before we present, that's right.
Mike, the public engagement part, there's probably not a dozen people they needed to talk to, and they've been at that for two months. You know, so, um. I'd like to move this along, it, it was supposed to take a couple of months, it's, it's gonna be pushing a year. And, and, you know, there's been some people waiting on having the zoning, we're not anywhere near the zoning yet, we still have to have. We were scheduled, Tom, you know, scheduled to bring it before the council, you know, and show us what they, where they're at, and then have the public meeting. And then move forward with it, but we're not even at the point of scheduling that, now we're in April.
Right, right, it will be coming soon.
So it'll be May, and, you know, things are coming up.
No question, I mean, you know, the, the, the only thing I could say there is, we're doing the best we can, given staff ability to respond to the. People that we've hired to work and their ability to meet, you know, scheduling, there's, there's a lot going on.
Two months with twelve people, that's enough, I mean, if they can't get ahold of the people, they've given them the opportunity, I mean. Tom, I don't think we, we need to just drag it on, if people aren't interested in participating or communicating.
Last I heard, there were two more people they were trying to talk to, right, and then we were scheduling the meeting, that was earlier this week, so, they're, they're doing pretty well, they.
Yeah, and we said twelve people, so we, we've still got this little condensed hole, where, when we first started talking about it, it was a lot bigger area. I mean, I know I'm going back eight or ten years, so.
Right.
So probably more than twelve people too, but it's, it's.
Well, the general consensus was, yeah, the general consensus was, drag it down there a bit more.
Right.
It encompasses a lot bigger area.
Right, yeah, the area in the cop.
What changed it to a little?
It, it, it has, right, it, it has shrunk, I think, part of what I had felt like we had heard was that, um, if all that were. To be developed, that would be too much, right, we're still talking about treating and considering that whole area, but that, at least. For the, for, in the near future, the development footprint within that would be a, would be a more constrained area, which might then expand out, um, somewhat, over time.
So, so Richie, we had, you know, we had the meeting before with the community in Rico, and then this go around, they identified, I think. Potential landowners slash people who have, would have businesses here, or purchased here. To potentially develop, like Mark Prater owns quite a bit of property, and Kenny Smith, and the, the art place. So that's what I mean, probably a dozen people, um, Marianne Reeves, you know, that kinda thing. But the residents, we're gonna have them again, but we've already got their input, so I, that was my assumption, that it was gonna be the business and property owners, right?
Right.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's my whole thing, the original conversation was here, now we got to here. Yes, it's supposed to be a bigger area, and I know, uh, I guess just about everybody in that area will be rezoned. And, uh, you know, what I hear from the community is that they would be fine with having. Like our own little district, where we do have our own shops and things, and condensing that, I mean, who cares if it runs to the ball field? And encompasses these churches and encompasses other people's property, maybe that gives them some options to, to, uh. Develop or have a business or what have you, you know, instead of just this forty acres at the city ball, cause I know that's gonna be the intent.
Right, right.
It's, we're gonna hold on to it, subdivide it.
Right.
And figure out a way to use it to profit, so I'd hate to think that that would take away from individual owners' rights to do the same thing, for sure. So if it comes back like this, I say we need to get it back to where it was, that was what the community wanted, so how it got here, I don't know.
Right, it's, right, it is reduced, there, there's only so much, I mean, we. The common saying is, retail follows rooftops, right, we're talking about, uh, a lot of, um.
Like you were saying.
Creating.
Many years ago that politics would fail.
Creating, right, right, creating, creating a little, a little town center, there's not, there's not.
The population, okay, so I mean, we'll let the citizens decide what they want this, and what they want, I think, and I think they, they spoke real loud, you know, it's making, it's not arguing with you.
Absolutely, no, that's, that's a part of the process, absolutely, if that's what we hear from them, I think that.
And it is, look, to be clear, the thing that the students gave us, that was just on our land, is, is this is absolutely much bigger than that.
Absolutely.
Absolutely much bigger than that.
That's right.
And, and again, you know, I, I, I. I guess on behalf of our little city will apologize for the fact that things take longer than we think sometimes, but they are working on it. It's continuing work on it. And yes, pass along the message into you two, the sooner the better, right, because there's anxiousness here to get that done. Last thing I had was, uh, commission priorities, we, we mentioned a couple of them when I talked about the, uh, the work product from the cop land thing. You know, there's this idea of the cataloging of all of the historic properties, building on the thing that the South Fulton. Uh, Seating Byway, uh, had, and what we've got so far, that feels to me like one to remind them of. Uh, our intention on, it feels to me like another one is, uh, you know, continuing to move the ball forward as the Riverlands project. Gets the work done in the Riverlands Park, and we're getting ready to open that park, on, you know, making sure that the plan for that is in place, so that we know what we're doing. As we're getting ready to open that, get that to council, and get a council's approval on that, and, and those were the couple that were top of mind for me. Uh, I don't know what else you guys have, you know, it's, it's, planning commission is reactive, they don't, we don't really give them things to do, the stuff comes in for better or better. Uh, Parks Commission has a lot of kind of day-to-day things, and running the parks that we've already got, managing volunteer process and all of that. But we've got new parks coming, Historic Commission is much more open there in terms of what they can be focusing on, so.
Which, um, my wishlist for the Parks Commission is, or maybe this is for the staff too, to finish putting up. The trail junction signs in the park, so we can start using the new map that's now a year old, and we haven't used it yet. And I continue to hike out there, and people, you know, say, well, we get to a point, and there's a couple of serious points where you just don't know where to go. Especially on that red side, and I don't know what that takes. But, um. So, so that, that would be on my wishlist, um, and. Sorta on, um. The Historic Commission, uh, we, we talked about a couple of the, the historic sites that the city owns, and I guess. They were on the list that we, we talked about, the one we were gonna have the planning commission, you know, what do we wanna spend hotel motel money we have on. Um, prioritize, but, but still, some of these things just kinda sit dormant, Beaver's House, the, um, Varner's House, whatever that is, a scout hut. With the, um, I, I think I'd like to see a recommendation from the Historic Commission. Um, and they're probably waiting for a recommendation from the council to say, well, what do you have to work on, but if we're gonna have that Riverlands Park developed, uh. The, one or the other, seems like it'd be a, an opportunity time to go ahead and pay to have. The septic and well system updated for the Beaver's House as first step, and then, you know, maybe start peeling it away one at a time, you know. I have the full, full-blown, uh, remodel of the thing, but as we can afford, if it needs a new roof or gutters, to get it to the point where we can use it for public use. Cause the park will be right there.
So like a prioritization of that.
Prioritization of that, I mean, if the council wants to pick one of those things, um, we've got a Historic Commission, they could, you know, be working on that. We've got some funds.
You know, with, with the Historic Commission, I know, um, Sarah Love, and, and I hear what you're saying, Lori, there. But, uh, the fact is, she's, um, it, it reminds me of the, the situation we had with Mary Beth Wonsley before her house was in the city. Due to her work, she'd been a part of things for twenty years, it'd been, it'd been dumb not to have her included in what was going on, and, uh. Sarah actually happens to be one of my neighbors, and, and in my opinion, with what Tom said, you know, with her. Contacts and people she knows what she does, it would be very stupid if she wants to continue to serve the city, not to let her do that. But that's, you know.
Her back, her background too, right, she's an archaeologist, and we don't, I'm not sure, I mean, that's very unique, I'm guessing, and I don't know. I understand what you're saying too, Lauren.
And I get exactly what Lori's saying, but I think, you know, like in the case of Mary Beth, that was a unique situation, the line was just right there, and, uh. Sarah is gonna come back to the community, um, but, um, you know, I just feel that she. She, she can bring us stuff that we would have a hard time figuring this stuff out, especially when it comes to history stuff, she just knows people.
Any, any other?
You mentioned the path alignment, I don't know if that's something, I, I don't know what, if that would be a commission, or where does that?
Well, you know, actually, there's, it's an interesting question too, because we've been talking about. You know, the, this, this application that's coming in from the studio, and what are things that the city would want? You know, if that moves forward, and, and one of the things that they've been talking about too, is dedication of more land to the park, more than we could talk about originally. And also potentially the trail that connects the Riverlands Trail. And, you know, we've also talked to Bukart about connecting through his property, and, and again, this is one of these things where you can get landowners who are willing to do it. You do it, but would that be a park then, and, and, yeah, Parks Commission gets involved in that or not, you know, we, we need to be. That's not a thing yet, that's not a fact yet, but this one on the south side, so far, that's just gonna be talking to landowners, right? But, but, yeah, it's, it's a good question.
Yeah, it's like, when is the time to get, gain commitment?
Yeah. I mean, you know, it's, it's like anything, if we had more money, we would be doing all of the stuff at the same time, but.
It just makes sense, as we look at properties that are, you know, under development, or being considered for development, to make sure we keep top of mind where that path goes.
And it's, you know, one of the, one of the biggest changes since the, the last iteration of the zoning that we adopted. Was the ability for open space to be donated to the city. And, you know, we may, over the course of time, find developers not wanting to maintain that space, and, you know, that could be connected to parks, or added to parks, or whatever. I'm talking right now to a landowner who's interested in donating some land to one of our parks, that is, is touching it. Whereas when and where the Parks Commission gets involved in that, I'm not quite sure, but obviously, you know. If it's real, you and I have talked about a lot of the stuff that I'm trying to get people to do, you know.
If we, if we're talking about the path earmark money, um, remember that that comes with a little federal money, it comes with a lot of rules, a lot of obligations on the city's side. So you want to consider the character, where you would want a path of that character, versus other locations where you might be able to do a lot more cheaper. In a different character, or a character that's more appropriate for that particular area.
It's why we kept coming back to that one, because it has to be, you know, ADA.
It's like high volume.
Well, but we've talked about that, like, you know, if there were ever gonna be like a trunk trail in Cochran Mill, that you could. Take Grandma in the wheelchair to see the waterfall, or whatever, that might be it, you know, but, or the kids in the stroller. Cochran Mills is the right park for it, but the point is, that's really what that's geared toward, and that. And that does not feel like most of what we're talking about, right? So. Anyway, are, are there any other like specific priorities that people have? Because again, I, I, I wanna be careful about bandwidth, right? You know, because everything that a commission does also then adds some work to somebody that sits inside this building that's already over.
Tom, not so much that we add anything else, but that we know they're working on something and then they have a timeline for it. Because some of these things, like the historic markers, were early on last year and we never, you know, really moved forward with that. So just to know if, what they've picked. And one thing a year might not be too, too much to ask. And then just have a deliverable at the end of the year. They showed us something.
They did have some money.
Yeah.
Yes, money was a problem.
So that was another thing. They got twenty-five thousand dollars.
Twenty-five thousand dollars. So that's a good question.
Not deliverable, so.
The other thing too would be like the.
No, money was not the holdup there.
Nope.
Yeah, you know, and, and that's a long story. I'm not gonna go into that story right now. But the, I know the historic markers were close to that. I know that there's editing going on. But that's, that's getting closer, right? All right, anything else? Really good with the order? Otherwise. Ruby, sorry, you still there?
I'm still here. I'm good. Thank you so much. Yeah, have a good evening.
You're no longer five feet tall, so I keep forgetting you're up there. Sorry. Um, see everybody on Tuesday.
Can I, can I add a, a studio project?
Yes.
As you know, we have the application for the studio. It's been in DRI process. I expect you to come out of DRI process um, middle-ish of April. Um, working on, the applicants would like to schedule a public meeting right now. They're looking at April eighteenth. Just wanted to toss that out. That's a Tuesday. That's not, not firm yet, but probably will be. I, I would anticipate that'll probably be the date. I don't see a reason why it would have to change. Um, and uh, we would expect it probably, assuming everything goes smoothly on the May agenda for first read. Um, so just wanted everyone to know and keep your eyes open for those hearings and everything. Because that's a.
So when can we um, spread that? Or is it, when is it firm? So we can, you know?
Well, for, yeah, right, right. On the, the hearing schedule, right? We can, we, yeah, we really, really can't say. We don't have the final DRI materials. But we probably will go ahead and schedule that public meeting. Um, at, it's their request, it's their meeting. It's not a city meeting. Uh, but that's, that's the date they threw out. But yeah, we don't really know how much back and forth there might be between now and when it gets on the calendar.
Although, well, and that's the thing. So it's not gonna get on the calendar until we do have all the DRI stuff, because the DRI stuff. Into our conditions of zoning, right? And, and that's one of those places too, when, when they hear all the things that we're gonna require, they still have a, can we afford to do that or not decision, right? Before we even have anything else to talk about, so. I don't wanna let.
Get the hopes up, right?
Right, right. I just wanted people to be paying attention, because it may be coming right up.
Anything else? Anything else? All right, thanks, everybody.